And my wife and I looked around and we thought, how can we contribute? How can we do more? We thought about where is the best place to do that? And we really felt like, I know you all know probably better than anyone in the city, that local government is where it's at. Local government is the government we interact with most. It's the street we ride down, it's the water we drink, it's the police we interact with. It's the street signal, it's our transit, it's everything in many ways. And this is the place where you could have a very tangible impact on people's lives. You don't just go and you speak and you don't just talk about after our policies. You talk about things that impact people's lives every day. And that's where I wanted to get involved. I spent 20 years of my life taking on big fights and getting things done. I got my start organizing a walkout to protest George Bush's immigration bill when I was a sophomore in high school. I organized students nationally for President Barack Obama and National President of College Democrats of America. I came out as LGBTQ on the state Democratic National Convention in 2012. And for the past nine years, I've been a trial lawyer and now a partner in a law firm called Justin Donbree. I've taken on some of the biggest companies in the world, held them to account. But I've also done a lot of pro bono work here, including fighting Republicans when they tried to overturn our election in 2014. So I know how to fight, and I know how to get things done. That's what I want to do as a city council member. And for me, this campaign's been a lot about listening. Sitting down, having conversations with many of the folks in this space, and asking questions about what matters to you, what's important, what can city councils be doing better? And I will be the first to tell you, I'm not a transit expert, but I will always, always, always be ready, listen, and learn. David Fields, one of the first persons I sat down with, where leadership used to be together. He walked me through his plan, incredible work he did under Mayor Turner. And I know some of that work is taking a backseat. And I want you to know that I am committed to try to push that work forward. Try to do it in a way that builds through consensus building. But if we can't do it through consensus building, we're going to fight. But I always want to start from a place of consensus, because in my experience, that's the best way to make progress happen. But I'm really looking forward to the conversation, answering questions. But mostly, I hope to hear from you all about, you know, if we're writing the first 90 days of my agenda, what do those ordinance look like? How do we build this coalition? How do we get things done? Thank you.
Thanks so much. And so, we have five questions. We allotted three, about three minutes per question. So why don't we just go to some, start with that?
If anyone can use the microphone?
Yeah.
So you're going to be asking basically five questions, three minutes answers each. And these are a great opportunity for a lot of the people that are not here to be able to hear your responses to these specific questions. So let's start with number one. Do you regularly use public transit? If no, why not? And if yes, when was the last time you used it? Where do you go? And how do you get there?
So I regularly use public transit when I'm in other cities. I do not use it here. I would say my primary modes of transportation are driving, walking, and biking. It's just sort of where I live, where my work is. And as you can imagine, campaigning, I sort of have to go all over the city. I probably put more miles in my car in the last year than I had the past seven or eight years living in Houston. But I think it's an incredibly important thing, as all of you all know, for a number of reasons. But one, I think, sort of as we try to build bridges, it helps bring communities together. I want to, I know you all do, want to get rid of the stigma that public transit is for people who don't have a car. It's not true. Public transit is a way for all of us to get around the city. And we need to be doing more to make it accessible, reliable, and, you know, on-time and efficient repeat stops, make sure that people can use it regularly to get around town. So I hope to use public transit more. I would love the opportunity to sit down, let's take a little bit of that and understand what that experience is like. Let's take a route on the line and understand what that experience is like. And together, we can start to try to break down some of these stigmas about public transit.
Great, thank you. Question number two is, when was the last time that you walked or biked to get somewhere in Houston? Tell us about that experience.
Probably this week. So there's a grocery store near our house that my wife and I like to walk to. There's a couple coffee shops that my wife and I like to walk to. So we regularly do that. I have to admit, I have not been as good about biking since the campaign started. But before the campaign, I would regularly take my bike on the bayou and take my bike to Memorial Park from Montrose. So I'm a big fan of both of those options. If nothing else, it keeps us, you know, absolutely moving. I actually lived downtown the first four years that I was in Houston. And I loved it because I never had to rush. I got to walk to the office, I got to walk to restaurants, I got to walk to dinner. And my wife and I decided to move out of downtown. But it was really nice to just like have that break of work and have that time to think. But I always felt safe, and it's a very, it's a wonderful experience. And I hope to do more on council, to have less. Not to set those, not to live in certain communities that can sometimes be very expensive.
Then question number three. How have you made it safer for kids and families to walk around Houston neighborhood? How will you continue to do so as a city council member?
Yeah, so, like I said, I think the main thing that I, anybody in my, in this position needs to do is listen. And I learned about, but I know you all know, which is the epidemic of people that are being hit by cars in the city. And I disagree that scooters are the biggest public safety concern. Obviously, people being hit by cars is much more horrific. And we need to be doing more. I mean, we're now getting national attention focused. We shouldn't need national attention to shame us into doing more about this issue. I am fully committed to Vision Zero. I want to hopefully encourage my fellow council members and the mayor to go in that direction. Make sure we're doing something. And I will say, I'm always willing to learn as well. You know, when there was the accident in Montrose that student that was gay, I put out a statement saying, you know, I was grateful that the mayor did something. And some folks, you know, came to me and they said, well, we don't like particular signal that he proposed. This is the most effective. And I appreciated that feedback. And I'm always willing to listen, learn, and now I understand. That particular signal that he proposed, it wasn't the most effective. All these other alternative options, let's talk about those other alternative options. And so for me, that was a great lesson in, it's not just about putting in a signal, it's about putting in the best kind of signal. So I hope to work with each and every one of you to understand those requirements. If you're ever fighting for the right things, but know that I'm always willing to listen and learn and do better and improve. And hopefully, we can do that together.
Okay, question number four. Is improving citywide mobility, sorry, is improving citywide micro-mobility through programs like bike and scooter shares a priority for you? Why or why not?
Absolutely. I mean, one, it makes the city more accessible for people who it may not otherwise be accessible for. It is a fun, environmentally friendly way to get around the city. And I think it's just also important, as we continue to encourage the become the cities, you know, I'm a lawyer at law firm. Every league here, all over the country, saying, don't go live in New York or LA, come to Houston. And one of the pitches I was making, I was monitoring, I used to have access to those things. I'm going to show access to multi-model transportation. We want the next great generation of folks to come here. We got to make it, you know, sustainable, and that's a big part.
And then number five. What's your vision for active transportation in Houston? For example, do you support removing minimum parking requirements, increasing bus frequency, and investing in more transport?
So I, I found that it could be a great conversation. And I read our proposed plan, right? Get better to make the bond investments to get us to at least 25% increase transportation from what our previous efforts were. I completely agree. And I think we should be doing more. I don't quite understand what we kind of stepped back, but I think we should push the break in the dollars. If voters approve it, I think the city overwhelmingly supports it. So I'm a big supporter of bus rapid transit. Want to make sure we can advance that. With regards to minimum parking requirements, as we had in our discussion, I think it's something I would certainly consider. But I want to kind of understand more of the details, which means making sure that it doesn't crowd out people that may not otherwise be able to afford to get to certain areas or have access to certain areas. But I think if we can do it in a way that accounts for some of those concerns, I'm sure I'm hoping to.
We have one more question, and what is the time?
Uh, 10:18.
10:18, okay. We're going to have plenty of time for a very healthy Q and A session as well. Of course. And so let's just ask the one final question, and then we'll kind of open up the floor for discussions. Okay, so the last question. Only 57% of Houston's streets have sidewalks. And of those, 39% are rated subcar. What is your plan to improve quantity and quality of sidewalks citywide?
This is, of course, and again, I'm always about learning with the year round. I thought, when Jordan talked about the efforts that Abby Hayman had taken to kind of shave off streets that had issues, rather than having to repave them, I thought that'd be a great idea. We should absolutely promote that. And I think sidewalks is at least, hopefully somewhere where we can reach agreement with the mayor. I think he does believe in them to some extent. And so trying to figure out where we can prioritize redeveloping them. They're obviously very expensive. I think continuing to ask builders to do their part when they're creating new developments and important projects. But I will continue to support the development of them. But I do think it's important that we look to communities and figure out areas that are in the process. I don't want to just keep spending money, you know, repaving that same sidewalk for a town. I want to make sure that we're talking forward to the city, giving them all an opportunity to kind of weigh in. And if there's areas that have been long ignored, for me, that's a big part. I think it's uniquely the role of an outlarge council member. We're kind of, we've got the whole city here at the backstop for district council members. Maybe they've got so much on their plate, maybe that additional person to make that push. Maybe that person sort of looks at that extra community that's being ignored, for whatever reason. That's who I want to be focused on, on council.
Thank you. So yeah, now is the time that we can start opening up the floor. And I know you wanted to ask some questions as well. So we can do a back and forth ping pong type deal.
I don't mean to interrupt any questions. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I'm not going to ask the question about the scooter ban, I'm going to let Ed do that. And just by a little way of background, I appreciate when you say that you're learning. What y'all may not know is, when, right after Alejandra Now, she started meeting with people in the community, and she listened to what we had to say. So certainly, she got an earful from me about the state of mobility in the city. All right, here's my question. The transparency ordinance is working its way through city council. Councilmember Ramirez has been diligently trying to put it together. How do you, how do you feel about the transparency ordinance?
I think it's amazing. I think it's wonderful that he put it in. I think he's a great person to do it. Because, as he's bringing it, it's not about the mayor. It's not about any particular mayor. It's about making sure that the will of the people is honored. And when council votes on something, he represents the people, he represents constituents. That should be respected, and nobody should have the power to take that away. And so I think it's wonderful, and I strongly champion to do everything I can to help push it forward.
Thank you. Thank you for the tea, Kevin. So a couple times, I thought today that you really want to seek consensus with the mayor. And I think we have a problem now where we have a lot of council members seeking consensus with him to avoid retribution. Because what we've seen is that any council member that tries to push back against him, like Senator Pollard, basically can't access any administration resources right now. And council members who curry favor with him get all the attention like Martinez. And we had the vote on the scooter just recently, where everyone voted, even the council member that tried to tag it, was threatened to have that tag overruled. And when you talk to the council members privately, they'll agree with us, saying that it was a terrible ban. We don't agree that people should be pulled over pretextually with affirmative defense litigation. But we did it because we don't want the retribution from the mayor. So what does consensus look like to you?
So I would say a couple of things. One, I think you start from a place of value. So I'm taking in the lessons I've learned, being a litigator, being an organizer. You start from a place of values and figuring out the values that we share with the people. The mayor obviously cares about driver safety. And we can start there from a place that we have slightly narrow roads. The drivers that you were most concerned about will be safer. And then we can have a discussion about the things that are on the side of the road that we may have some disagreement about, but we can start there. So I want to start from figuring out where our values lie. That's what I mean by building consensus. But I recognize the dilemma you're saying. And I think council members need to feel like they have support along the horseshoe. So using Prop A, not just, you know, with one person putting it forward or asking people for support on social media, but using it with six or seven people that are aligned on the issue. So, and with community organizations aligned on the issue. And so when we come out for something, it's not you're taking one council member down. You're taking seven, eight council members and all of these community voices. That's how I think we need to build consensus. It can't, I don't want it to be ever be my idea. It needs to be our idea, and that makes it much harder to get in the way. And then you can, you want to come on board. You've already got this little consensus, come be a part of it. That's how I want to organize and advocate on the horseshoe. Is, it's not my idea, it's our idea, but having those conversations, you know, behind the scenes and getting to know fellow council members. Adrian Garfield, many years ago, they used to do, you know, breakfasts. They would all sit down, they'd know each other, know each other's families. That's where you start to build relationships, where no matter what side of the aisle you're on, we can get to know each other, we can build trust, in hopes that we can get things done and not be a, not be a break. But I certainly need your help and advice to figure out how to implement that. But that is my working theory, that's how we can get things done. And plus, I don't have a budget that can, that's that much better. Because you're not like constituents that will suffer if I take a stand. My job is really just to advocate and build that consensus around the horseshoe to get things done. Sorry.
You mentioned Prop A, and I have the same thought. Have you identified potential allies on the council now and has reached out to them yet?
Well, some of them have publicly endorsed me, so Sally Alcorn, Julia Ramirez, Joaquin Martinez, Mario Castillo. They've all publicly come out. I blocked walking with Abby Hayman the Saturday morning. And so, yes, I think there is a natural place to build consensus. Even the folks that have endorsed me, I've finished an open conversation with. And so I think there's a lot of good ground to be built. And I think someone new coming in sort of gives people an opportunity to kind of reshuffle and kind of, you know, come out and maybe for things that they haven't before. And perhaps I can give them, or others can help give them protection to say things that maybe for whatever reason they were unwilling to do before. But again, I don't mean to say consensus in that I'm not willing to fight. Like, I just won $1.5 billion. Like, I know how to fight, but I want to start from a place of consensus in the hopes that we can get things done.
Do you support more road diets on paper for our fans?
I support road diets where it makes sense, like with having conversations with folks in the community and the engineers and experts. So again, my trial lawyer roots, you always got to turn to the experts and look at the data. Not just someone saying, is this good or bad? What is the data underlying why you're going to do something? Understanding the effect it's going to have on something like emergency vehicles. Looking at statistics, and if statistics don't back it up on that particular roadway, then we won't do it. But if they do, then let's push forward. But I only want to study data to understand whether or not it makes sense.
Thank you back. Sorry, is there someone else?
I'm always standing up because it's cold. Give me a chance to move around, okay? Active candidate for it. So, think about where to start. Okay, the active transportation or transportation ecosystem in Houston is incredibly complicated. And it involves multiple entities, city, county, metro, HGAC, tech staff. And in that ecosystem, it has been incredibly challenging to shift priorities because of the balance or imbalance of power at many of those forums. And community members, organizations, including many here today, tried to shift that balance, particularly at HGAC through Fair for Houston, which unfortunately, the city put a major roadblock in front of and HGAC never moved forward. And I know there are efforts to fix that. But what's happened in the meantime is a continued massive decades-long investment in more freeways, higher freeways, cutting across all of our communities, which is an absolute detriment to active transportation, to air quality, to the integrity of our communities because of how much they continue to separate us. I should have added party, I should have added Hector to my list because Hector's doing it to us too. So I'm curious, what path forward do you see, if any, for how we could finally shift the balance away from the default, which is fast cars, more highways, to more active transportation, community-oriented approaches, given how complicated the system is? And but ultimately, that system is what determines funding and determines the priorities. How do we start to shift that back to what's good for public health and people?
Yeah. So that's the, you know, $100 million question.
$100 billion.
$100 billion. Yeah, so I don't have a perfect answer, but here are my thoughts. And again, I genuinely mean this, I want to help figure this out together. First, what I have heard from folks, not only community folks, but engineers, we are at a big detriment in the city of Houston and this area because we can't get together and push for a unified voice about what we want for transportation, like Dallas and Austin and San Antonio can, because we're losing out on a lot of money. That's not helping anybody. And so I think, again, it's starting from a place of what are our shared values? The engineers want more projects, we want, you know, more projects. Let's try to help use that as a starting ground for, let's figure out a unified way to get these things. I think you were posting about this in the Dallas Business Journal with that report about how, you know, we lost out on a ton of money that was supporting, you know, multimodal transportation. Engineers don't want to lose out on that money. So let's utilize those additional voices to get on our side and build those coalitions to encourage people to do the right thing. In terms of how we get that, I think it takes external and internal forces. It takes you all showing up in all those spaces, like I know you have and continue to do so. But it takes folks, you know, the elected officials, having those conversations on the back end and saying that if you don't follow through with your commitments that you may make publicly to do these things, we're going to hold you to account. We're not going to keep appointing these people to these boards because they're not going to follow through on what they're supposed to be in these groups. I mean, I'm a big believer in, not just those boards, but like tourist Houston first. There needs to be a lot more like, what are you committed to focus on? What are you going to do as a board member? And if they don't do it, follow through and say, we need you voices. Because they all answer to you in the exact same way. And then, you know, I hope we move in that direction. I'd like to think telling people to loss of funds, because people, you know, the county spends so much more than the city does. And saying how we could increase those funds if we do this, I hope will be a starting place. But it's going to take all of us pushing on both fronts. But I certainly agree with that goal and purpose. I mean, as we saw with other highway expansions, it didn't reduce traffic. It just, it got filled up. Yeah, I don't have a better answer. But know that I want to work together with you and anyone else willing to help figure out how to do that. And I do think there are allies in some of those spaces that want to do the same thing. We just have to make them feel comfortable and know that they've got the political support to do it. And it doesn't have to be one or the other.
Thank you all for being here today, I really appreciate it and putting this together. I want to go back to a couple of things that you said. So you talked about being a lawyer and, you know, fighting, but then you talked about consensus with the mayor. Particularly, in my opinion, what's happening with this administration? I thought we were making progress in Houston in walkability and bike lanes and whatnot. But we now continue to see that death rate-focused projects are scaled back, bike lanes are scaled back, installed or reversed. You know, we're not far from the 11th Street project, that's helped for debate. So I want to know, like, given this pattern, why couldn't we trust you that you'll stand up to the mayor when necessary and actually advocate for these projects instead of, you know, letting them be undone? As well as, you know, the taxpayer dollars that we spent into these projects, it's now going to, you know, being wasted because of the mayor's influence on the projects. So, you know, what specifically are you going to do? You know, we are going to make progress in the city, and as you said earlier, you know, make it a place that we want to move to.
Yeah, well, first off, thank you for being here. I'm trying to be a good child here, though. And I'm sorry to let you down. I will say, so first, I think council member on municipal property, people told that limit any mayor's ability to project. That ensures the council people support initiative, no mayor can think that. Right, you got one positive step, make sure we don't continue to see this pulling back of funds towards multimodal and, and transportation projects. There's not much I can say to you other than I'm not doing this for any other reason to help people. And I truly believe you got to be a person. And I'm never going to tell you something that I'm going to fight for and take that. What's the point of doing all this unless you're going to be a person? So I hope to earn your trust each and every day by the kind of council member I'm going to be. And to know that, so you'll know that when I tell you I'm going to fight for something, I'm not going to win every fight. But I am not afraid to stand up for the mayor to anyone. I, you know, I started in politics, we threatened that you picked out of school because I want to stand out from my fellow peers on an immigration bill. I risked being ostracized by my family when I came out at Democratic National Convention. You know, I became one of the first stag partners at my law firm and moved in a lot of rooms. A lot of people told me I couldn't do something, what I looked like or who I was or how old I was. But I'm not afraid of people, bullies, not afraid of people telling me that I can't do something. I want to be effective in pushing forward. But I, I don't owe the mayor anything. I don't owe me to do anything. I'm a lone person, I have a great job, if I don't get reelected, I'll go back to being a lawyer at my law firm. I'm just, I want to help. So know that I am going to fight for Houston, and we may not win every fight, but I'm always going to try.
I think that you're speaking about this important topic. One thing that you've mentioned is that in support of a lot of these projects and building consensus, you're going to be, you know, seeking grants and funds from the state and federal government. But you know, as we've seen recently, particularly with this state government and this particular federal government, their priorities don't necessarily align with what we're trying to do here at the ground level in Houston. So I would be a little skeptical about trying to rely on the feds for some of these funds. So to what sense would you consider, or what plans do you have or ideas do you have to boost, you know, revenues and funds available for the city so the city can sponsor and fund these projects, maybe without the federal and state support? And let me just caveat that real quick with Strong Towns. We recently wrote an article talking about how federal complete streets programs are just kind of like simple check boxes that don't account for local condition. So yes, you may have a complete street in name only, but it's still deadly. There's massive parking lots that incentivize driving. So yes, while you've achieved the micro-mobility goals on paper and got the federal funds, the actual street itself is not improving local conditions. So how would you address that kind of mismatch between federal, state, and local priorities? And maybe supplanting it with local funds and dollars?
Yeah, so I would say you're absolutely right that it's going to be a challenge to get dollars out of the state federal government. But as we're seeing, we had the article we talked about a moment ago, there is money that can come from other entities to help us. And when we talk about grants, I think it's not just government entity for private entities. And so I just want us, again, before we go and ask taxpayers to do more, we should be as creative as possible as the city to explore those other options. But I think all options need to be on the table. You know, if we're going to explore, you know, an exception to the revenue cap, I think it could perhaps be a public safety exception. Because that's something I think voters might be more amenable to, it's the largest line item in our budget, and then that would free up dollars, spend more dollars on transportation projects. But I think something that certainly needs to be on the table. I think most people don't realize, again, you all probably do, how little of your dollars are actually coming to the city. So some of you folks may have heard me say before, as many years ago, there's your widget on the city website where you can put in your address, and it would show you how much of your dollars are going to the libraries, the police department, to parks. And when people see that, they would often realize, oh, I'd be willing to pay, you know, $80 for the parks rather than the $70 I paid, or whatever the small amount may be. I think that's a first step in having a conversation about potentially having additional revenue, you know, through asking the people with a public safety, type safety exception to revenue cap. But we all have boundaries. We also live within our meets. I don't think the city should get to live under sort of any different rule. And I will certainly push our council to do so. And so I think all options need to be on the table.
What is your position on the closure of Oak Street? And do you approve of the expansion of the GRB?
So I think, so Lisa Han, who I know many of you know, has been really giving me a lot of great advice and insight into this process. And I think the way this was rolled out was terrible. The idea that a semi, you know, private public entity like Houston first could make this monumental decision without community input is just wrong. And you should never be doing something like that without more community input before we proceed with it. Or really just kind of telling you, this is the way it's going to be. And you can ask questions about it, this is the way it's going to be. So I think that was wrong. And I hope in the future, if Houston first or any entity were to do that, you would do a lot more community input in the beginning rather than what we saw here.
Would you vote according to the community input?
Sorry, Henry.
Would you vote according to the community input? Like, would you have voted for the closure of Oak Street or not?
So I, I mean, I think the MOU, I think it's all about the details in the MOU. So the memorandum of understanding, what is going to be done to remedy the closure of Oak Street? So if we're going to make these genuine investments and make commitments of our dollars, to make commitments of genuine, like actual pledges, it's not just, we're going to do what we can to make it better. That's not good enough. But if we're going to make specific pledges of dollars that are going to be spent, of efforts we're going to take, of transportation that we're going to make otherwise accessible, that's something I think I would be more amenable to. But there have to be concrete commitments by Houston first, by the city of Houston, we're going to proceed with the closure of Oak Street. So I think it's all about that balance and the specifics. And again, putting my prowler hat on and looking at And again, putting my prowler hat on and looking at contracts, all about the details. I don't want a vague promise that we're going to do better. I want specific commitments about what we're going to do to make sure that the impact of the closure of Polk Street is going to be remedied by these specific actions to make sure this community doesn't suffer. The Easthead is such an important part of this city. And the, you know, I'm all for tourism, but at what cost? And so we just need to not forget those people that are such, it's just an important part of our city. Favor of tourism and hopefully not the National Convention.
Yeah. And I'm not a lawyer. I'm sorry. I missed another question. But MOUs, like what we have between NEPA and the federal government and tax law right now, which allows for our community to have a red line included, are not legally enforceable. So is there something that, I'm not a lawyer, that I don't know that are MOU legally enforceable? Because I thought they weren't.
Well, I think, I mean, it all depends on how you craft it, right? The city put, you know, big measure, they can make certain commitments on their end. So it's all about how you craft the language.
So MOU can be legally enforceable.
It may not be an MOU. You may call it something different. But I, there are, there's no doubt that the city in Houston first can make specific commitments about what they're going to do as a part of their decision to. All you would do is add that language to the ordinance that, you know, confirms the closure of Polk Street.
So one of the issues with Houston first and other local government corporations, which include territories, is that they have broad powers, almost no oversight and completely unelected boards. And the entity that we should be using to audit them, the Controller's Office, isn't even in the top five city controller offices in Texas in terms of its staff and budget, let alone for the fourth largest city in the state. And you, as a council member, can vote to increase that budget for the Controller's Office. Will you commit to increasing the Controller's Office so that we can actually audit all of these LGCs that are running a completely shadowed government in Houston?
Yes, I am all in favor of giving the audit department the core money to do what they need to do. It's sort of like what we're seeing in the gutting of the federal government. You still have the FDA and the USDA and they're like supposed to be like regulating and making sure that all of our food and, and drugs are secure. But there's no one out there to actually go do the inspections to point them. And so we have similar problem in Houston. That doesn't make any sense. Let's make sure they have sufficient funds. I want to talk to, to Controller Collins and others about what that right amount would be. But certainly if we do not have the funds to actually perform the audits that we need on these entities, we need to fix that.
Another, sorry. So in, in, in talking about building consensus, you mentioned that you want to talk with, you know, the fire chiefs and the police officers and the engineers. And with all due respect to the individuals in those departments, kind of the messed up transit system we have is because of this like institutionalized gridlock that traffic engineers, fire chiefs have kind of instituted into our streetway design, which made it more dangerous for pedestrians. So would you, you know, then there is a bunch of literature and research. So it's hard to say there's no data opposing them, but it's just the consensus typically in city halls to go with those officials. And my question is, would you be willing to push back with the more recently recognized and accepted data and proposals from, you know, organizations like NACDO, the National, the North American City Traffic Organization, that do propose narrower street designs and alternative routes of transit that kind of buck the trend and are starting the paradigm shift?
I'd be willing to push back against anybody. I mean, there may be time for you all to come to me and say, I want you to do X. And I'm going to say, I'm going to explain why I may or may not agree. But there is nobody in the city that I'm going to be afraid to push back on. But I do think there is a perfect one size fits all approach. And I think we need to take each street and each, each infrastructure project, you know, step by step, case by case, and see what the needs are in that particular community. What does the data show? Do we need more data? Do we need different types of data? What do experts say? Are there competing experts? Why are the reasons for the different views? What's the data underlying those differences? And let's like try to get to the truth of the matter. But no, I'm not going to have any problem pushing back against. And that's, you know, you, you can't be beholden to anybody. I didn't get the endorsement of the buyer or police, so I don't, you know, owe them anything. But I want to work with them and they deserve to be at the table because they're an important part of this conversation. And so, you know, I see it all as the same and I don't ever want to shun someone to the table or say, you got it wrong this one time, so you can't be a part of the conversation. And I want to understand the reasons why they feel the way they feel. Because maybe we can find some consensus. Maybe we can all do some education.
Yeah. So we got a question in the chat that I want to expound upon. So the question is, where's Dwight? That's what was in the chat. And I want to expound upon that by asking if there was anybody that came here today who was on the fence or is leaning towards voting for Dwight, what is your message to them?
It's here. You know, that's the kind of council member I'm going to be, I think, in my conversation. Getting to know you all, I'm going to show up and I'm going to have conversations and, you know, you all are going to educate me about so much and I'm always going to be willing to learn and listen. And that's, that's what I think, what if you're elected official, people who are willing to learn and listen. Aren't going to tell you this is the way it was, you know, this is how I did it before. But how do you think we should do it and how do we get there together? If that's the kind of council member you want, then please, please, please vote me in three tenths of a round.
I do want to, oh, I do want to, right before, you know, the, the time runs out. I do want to open up the floor as well to, you know, asking some more lighthearted questions that you might have for the candidates as well. So just. So Kevin, maybe finish me.
Yeah, one, one more specific question. I appreciate that. Since you're running in a special election, I'll say when you win. You need to. When you set down at the horseshoe, you're going to be inheriting some issues already in motion. I think most of us here would agree, the scooter ban is badly flawed. Apparently there were city council members who didn't realize what they were voting for. As Pete mentioned, you're at the committee meeting on Monday. The civil liberties infringement, it seems glaringly obvious. So it feels like there's an appetite or an opening to fix it. So I'm wondering if you would be interested in picking that up when you land on the horseshoe to help me fix it.
I'm certainly open to having a conversation on how to make it better. I recognize there are some good underlying public safety concerns. Like I sat down, you know, with police officers, they told me people are dropping off their kids at midnight going out and enjoying the bars and their kids are outright. Nobody wants that. That's not good. We should take, impose enough regulation, increase enforcement, fine, whatever it may be. But we should do something to prevent that. That's not good for anybody. But we should not preclude people from being able to use scooters to get around. And I was glad that the ordinance does have an exception. People that are traveling to and from work, but as I understand, that's not quite getting communicated. So people still feel like there's an outright ban, even though there is that exception. They simply need more exceptions. Yes. Have a conversation about how to strike that balance between government overreach and doing something to protect people and try to prevent things that I think we can all agree, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to have twelve year olds on scooters at Big 98, you know, in separate breaks downtown.
Peter. You had said earlier that you might want to ask some questions about.
Yeah.
Please.
I, I just, I, you know, what do you think is the place to start to build consensus with? I've sort of given some of my ideas, but I welcome your thoughts.
You know, speaking with some city council members about parking reform. I know, you know, to the extent that the mayor does get brought up, public safety is typically the first thing that comes up. And, you know, I'll do the first, I'll be the first out myself as the parking reform nerd, so don't mind me. But, you know, we require fourteen spaces for every thousand square feet of bars that incentivizes drinking and driving. I just rode past a bar on, I think Durham, right before I 10 on the way over here. The bar was like itty bitty, but the parking spaces were huge and it was really hard. I could, I just can't imagine people being able to safely get in and out or a world where no one attending that bar doesn't drink and drive. So, you know, I think public sa, to, to the extent that all of these approaches touch on public safety. I know the mayor has his guiding mobility principles, whatever they may be. But there are some other components of what we're advocating for that definitely do touch upon public safety.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that because even speaking with, you know, real estate developers and the, the folks that had to lease the spaces, it's always so troubling and confusing that bars do require the most amount of parking spaces. And I think starting the conversation there, reducing the amount of parking that is required for bars.
Eliminating.
Yeah. But that will start a conversation for, hey, so what's going on across the entire regulatory landscape, right? And, and I think another thing that is really important to consider is that, yes, complete streets means great drainage and street trees and sidewalks and whatever, ways for everybody to move around. But if we don't have vibrant businesses because parking is, is terrible. If, if it's so hard to open up a business so that only, you know, nationwide chains are able to open up or only car washes are able to, to operate, then, you know, we also lose out on that, that vibrancy.
And I know your answer is going to be party, but if others are going to give me, if you're willing to share like your top priority and I'll please, I responded that, but also willing to share, you know, if you were in my shoes and the first ordinance you were going to put forward, what would that be? I'd love to hear what folks would say.
Transparency.
Well, that's already up. Yeah.
Well, it's not.
Well, I mean, but like it's already sort of in the pipeline. Like if you were going to.
We've had lots of stuff in the pipeline.
Yeah.
So we're not going to celebrate until it's done.
It, it may not have the votes, so having you in city council is a way, if you're going to support it, to help. City council, not you, because I appreciate how much you've learned. City council is badly informed about our stuff and they're in a bubble. So from what I've heard today, you being able to land on the horseshoe immediately to address that and to start engaging with the other city council members, especially the district ones. Because they're hyper focused on the district, which is what they're elected for. So that's great. But there's traditionally, city council hasn't had a great way of coming together around issues. So you being able to, like Manuel was saying, have that, spark that discussion is, is powerful.
So.
Sorry.
At the last meeting I attended of yours, the breakfast meeting, you asked which council member I admired the most. I've changed my mind since then. So it was Sally Elkhorn, which I still respect her a lot. But after the scooter vote, I'm saying Ramirez. And why Ramirez? Because he asks very informed questions on the horseshoe that educate the rest of the members to what the real issues are and what's happening behind the scenes and what the data is. And we need more members like that, that really dig into the details and the data and ask informed questions at the committee meetings and during public session and at the agenda session. For the number one ordinance, a lot of my train of thought, but one of the things that I would say is that the consensus involves all the parties making concessions. This mayor does not make concessions. So I would really call it consensus, but I would try, try to find some things that he's willing to move forward. One of which is expanding sidewalks and expanding and connecting trails and off-street shared use paths. So I'd like to hold him to account to that because he says these things, but we haven't seen a whole lot of action on it, even though he says he likes them. And then the, there's an ordinance, but I'll come back to that.
Sure. I think sidewalks is a glaring issue that there is a lot of consensus about. You probably disagree with him about how to go about it, because the scale and need is just so great. But I would draw some more attention to crosswalks, which are really part of personal value. And the, the devil is really in the details about that. It's really not enough to just something there. Or even in some instances, a traffic signal can be significantly more expensive and still not make the right difference. So it's just some federal awareness about how to do that because there is really low hanging fruit solutions around that. Especially as Metro was spending like one hundred million dollars in repatriation street. Thus far, I got a sense that that has gone towards a meaningful sidewalk or crosswalk. I think, yeah, more awareness around, right?
So I live in the near north side, so the path in Irvington Roundabout is very highly talked about in my neighborhood. But, you know, I support the roundabout. I think it's done exactly what it's supposed to do. But it was, I think it was implemented wrong. You know, it comes down to one lane like really quickly and cars are going way too fast. And that's like, that's the issue on Irvington Boulevard. Cars are going way too fast. And I've been almost hit multiple times walking with my daughter on maternity leave. And for me, priority is how do we slow down the traffic in our city? Cars are going way too fast. There's not enough pedestrian crosswalks. You know, we've put forward measures in my neighborhood to request crosswalks to access our local park and it's denied. And so, you know, for me, we need to take a step back and ask like, what, what do we want our communities to look like? How are we working together with the city, the county, the state to make sure that we are doing projects that have real improvements that are going to last, that make sense in our communities? You know, I love the roundabout. I think it would be a much better solution if it was just one lane and it didn't just come to, you know, a single, you know, lane through the roundabout right, right before it. And, you know, people are mad, but, you know, I'm looking at the next generation for my daughter. I want a walkable city. And, you know, we have lots of good, good businesses in my neighborhood that we could walk to. But there's, there's no easy way to accept, access them because sidewalks are not maintained. You put in a three one on request, they say it's, you know, the business owner or the individual's responsibility. But, you know, there's no accountability. So, you know, for me, it's how do we work together with all levels of government and, you know, holding people accountable?
Yeah, the, the reality is that cars just, just fly down these Houston roads. And, and I don't understand why it's so difficult to just make it slower. I mean.
Yes, sir.
You were talking about getting consensus with the mayor. I think one of the ways is to highlight the importance of complete streets. If we have complete streets, you know, obviously that also means access for cars, but also pedestrians and bikers and things like that. At the end of the day, in theory, and a lot of studies have showed this, this leads to more business, right? Because more people have access to these businesses, right? You don't have to have a car to access the business. Now you can walk to a business or bike to a business as well. So I think if you are able to convey that message, more business means more money, right? No one should be complaining about having more money, right? So I think that would be something that you could, right? Like try and try to put some emphasis on that. And that also goes, and goes to like parking requirements and things like that. Space at a large city like Houston is a premium, right? So if you can like capitalize on space, then that's going to be an improvement for everybody. I think one of the biggest drawbacks, or maybe not a drawback, but where businesses may be hesitant on is businesses don't like construction because construction is kind of a deterrent to that business, right? Because when you have construction, you put walls up to like, so people don't see the construction. And then those walls may then prevent people from seeing the business. I think business owners need to understand that construction is going to happen regardless. I think they need to understand that the construction that they want should be more focused on these multiple avenues of transportation. That is then, once, you know, the construction is done, is then going to give them more benefit.
Thank you. Share that.
Yeah.
I'm Tom Thompson. I resigned as chair of the Bicycle Advisory Committee in April as protest to the mayor. The problem is he hasn't nominated anybody to the BAC. The BAC was set up as part of the Houston Bike Plan that was passed in an ordinance by the council. He's essentially letting it winter away. So I'm saying this as, as awareness to you and a call to you to work with whatever coalition you form within the council to take that bike plan seriously and take the BAC seriously and, and start nominating people. There, there was a slate of people that were nominated before the mayor took office. He didn't take any action on it. He needs, because my understanding is he needs to present those people to the council for the, the council to approve the new members to BAC. He needs to.
So Prop A?
I, I can't.
Proposition A.
Prop A to present the.
There you go. Right. Back. Right.
Thank you.
Um, Spike.
Thank you so much for joining us today. And I appreciate Ruben speaking a little bit on land use. So I think that's the other side of the coin on this. You need to be able to access to a lot of these high quality multimodal trails and what have you. Being nearby hopeful lots. I think that, that kind of dovetails a little bit into housing and affordability and the need for many different floor, different kinds of homes for people in different stages in life, with different needs. Like, for example, for me, my wife and I would not be able to afford the place we're at if we weren't able to get access to an older home that was built under different rules. That's slightly too small. Um, that's slightly too small, doesn't meet the, you know, lot size or that sort of thing. Um, so I think that's, that's something to, that's something to consider as well. And I think there's opportunities to make a lot of progress on that at the city level. Uh, second thing I want to bring up, and I apologize for doing two things at once. But a lot of cities are, uh, enacting obligations on their Department of Public Works or their transit agencies uh, that they must build a certain amount of busway or bike lanes per year with a goal of hundred miles by twenty fifty or something to that effect. Um, Los Angeles, Houston, not Houston, not Houston, that'd be cool though. Los, New York City, um, Minna, uh, Minna, Minneapolis, Seattle, all these places that are really, really bullish on state family friendly streets. Um, I think that that's an opportunity to, I think what's missing in Houston is, uh, compulsion at the city level. And we could, we, there are opportunities to emulate and do best practices.
Thank you for sharing. If you have the data, I would like to think toward how that's working out. I'll do this in that. Yeah.
Anybody else?
I just want to say thank you to those, uh, who you are as a person in the Bronx city, to stand up for these whole. And and I applaud all of us for being up there, for caring so much about our home, our city, to do our, our, our city. So thank you so much for being here.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to make a pitch for more safe off of schools. I think every neighborhood school deserves, uh, the intersection that Pete mentioned, I think is really critical. Except, we we look at the sidewalks, the streets, the intersection is where the most danger is happening. And, um, there's a doctor at the U G School of Public Health that's working on, uh, rating each school on its walkability and bikeability. And I'd like to see the city invest the money in addressing the worst neighborhood routes to schools. So, um, yeah.
Against that.
Yeah, uh, probably one person. The people here that live in Montra's could probably speak to how the mayor and the Montra's TERZ has significantly reduced the impact of their safe off the school grant. So there's, there's already active efforts against safe off the schools. I think you need council members to stand up to that. I don't really see it.
The mayor, sixteen crosswalks and three four way stops from the safe routes to Montra's. Wow.
Because it's not about, you know, having beautiful sidewalk in front of your multi-million dollar home. Where we die, I might trip on a crack in the sidewalk, but where I would die is in a, in a crosswalk and intersection. That's the same for kids in school and all those easy places. So, uh, a lot of that safe route to school money just want to, you know, mine. And it's, it should be paid for their own sidewalk, I think, so.
Alejandra, I just want to encourage you, as I did before, to be, be the great voice that I have here. Please ensure that you also talk to the voices involved in, in northeast Houston, in A-List, in all of the other diverse areas of our city, because they have dire needs. We prefer better public transportation. And as you may see, their voices aren't always represented. So I just want to encourage you to put that first, uh, in all the things that works.
Yeah, I didn't know if you were here, but I said, for me, I think you've heard me say that priority for now large council members to focus on those communities at the beginning. That whether district councilor has too much on their hands, but to be that backbone. And I think those communities are exactly where you need to be focused.
Well, I don't want to, uh, make a stand out here, wait, uh, too much longer. Uh, I do want to, you know, also be able to conclude the livestream and then we can just kind of, uh, yeah.
My livestream.
How many people are on the livestream?
A million.